Okay, so what was the one that decreased heart rate? AMP, right, so that helped us bring blood pressure back down, but it's not, it's not really helping with the heart rate. It's an antagonist to aldosterone. Okay, so it caused you to excrete salt, which causes your blood volume to go down, which decreases stroke volume. Okay, so you've answered a lot of my questions. What issue?
Shame.
Shame. So if AMP brings it down, what are some that might increase heart rate?
Think about short, think about short term, yep.
Epinephrine? What's your, uh, diaphragm? Causes it to go up?
Yeah, TH.
Uh, T- TH, TSH is?
Yeah.
I'm already put you on the spot. You know, I like, I like. She's like, I don't like. Alright, so not all of them are gonna make heart rate go up, so we talked about some that make heart rate go up. Um, or go, I'm sorry, go up. What would make, um, if your blood pressure is low, what would be some hormones that would cause your blood pressure to increase?
Think about the three factors that regulate blood pressure.
What would be one that would cause, not heart rate, but stroke volume to change? Don't mention these a minute ago.
Say it.
Not AMP. ABB, I don't know. No, it's okay. Look, I'm glad you're making an attempt. Everybody in here is probably afraid of being wrong. I don't want y'all to do that. Speak with confidence and maybe you'll actually get it, alright? Because if you're not confident in your answer, that's, I'm sorry, I'm going on a life lesson thing here. When you second guess yourself, you're usually wrong, okay? With that second guess. Go with what your instinct tells you to. If you know it, you know it, okay? Alright, so she's kinda on the right track. She said AMP. What's an antagonist to AMP? AMP caused us to bring our stroke, uh, stroke volume. Say again? Aldosterone. Aldosterone, how would it make your stroke volume go up?
The mechanisms.
Say again? What does it do with sodium? You're right. You retain it, right? And water always follows salt, right? So if you retain salt, it goes back into the bloodstream, that's gonna pull water into the bloodstream as well, right? And how would that affect your stroke volume? It increases, it makes it go up, right?
By increasing what, though?
Say it.
Blood volume, there you go.
What's another one? It starts with an A as well, that would make your blood volume increase?
ADH.
Say it again?
ADH.
ADH, right. ADH has another mechanism, it just makes you retain water by putting aqua pores into the collecting duct. We'll get into that a little bit more when we get into the urinary system, but it does, it increases stroke volume by increasing blood volume, because it's bringing more water back into the blood. Good?
Is it the same with the vasopressin?
Vasopressin is another ADH.
That's just another name.
Yeah, yeah, so when you get in the clinic, I mean, there's different names, like, my line is to tell you, like, Bumechs, Lasix, thing, that would be some type of vasopressin ADH that you use to increase that stroke volume, yep.
And I'm glad she said vasopressin. So, the other effect of ADH, not only does it make you retain water, listen to its name, vasopressin. What's it doing, what does Vaso mean? V- Vaso.
Just think generally, what is, what would be a name that you would see with Vaso? Vaso, medical terminology.
Vascular. Alright, so, and then press. It's so, was constricting blood vessel, what would that affect up here?
Yes. It can increase your blood.
It increase your blood pressure? It increases the resistance, right? And so by increasing resistance, if you make that go up, that causes blood pressure to go up, right? So it has two effects, it's gonna have you retain fluid, but it also causes your blood vessels to vasoconstrict, which would increase peripheral resistance, which would make blood pressure go up. Good? Alright, I'm gonna stop. Yes?
Sorry, I'm half awake, but I'm trying to.
It's okay, I won't stop.
So if one of the three goes up, all of them go up?
Absolutely, they have, well, I need y'all to understand, your body is gonna try to maintain a constant blood pressure, okay? So just because your heart rate goes up, it doesn't necessarily mean that the stroke volume's gonna go up. Or that the peripheral resist, you like to work, what's your name? Chad, you like to work out? When you go to the gym and you start, like, lifting weights and things, do you start seeing your blood vessels? Because you start getting more vascular, right? Why does your body do that? Okay, then, we do wanna get more oxygen, we wanna get rid of the CO2, but in terms of blood pressure, why does your?
Because your heart rate increases, so it increases the blood.
Dilates.
The dilation.
The dilates. So if it dilates, how would that affect the peripheral resistance? Decrease, right? So just because one goes up, it doesn't mean all of them go up. So initially speaking, right, your heart rate's gonna go up, it's gonna cause your blood pressure to go up, but your body's gonna compensate for that by trying to bring it back down to that homeostatic point by decreasing the peripheral resistance so that you can maintain a steady 120 over 80. Is that, I'm sorry, did that answer your question? How many of y'all drinking a Monster this morning? Nobody? Okay, good, those are bad for you. What antimoster has an effect on your blood pressure?
Caffeine.
Caffeine, right? What does caffeine do that affects this formula up here? It increases your heart rate. This is why, I said these Monsters are bad for you. Because it doesn't let you go back to that normal homeostatic point. It brings your blood pressure up, and then it doesn't allow you to bring it back down, because there's something in it called tory, that has a vasoconstriction effect on your blood vessels. So when y'all drink those lovely Monsters, what happens to your blood pressure? It goes up and it stays up, because we're not, and so, long-term effect for that is what? How do we control blood pressure if we can't make our heart rate go down or our peripheral resistance go down? Well, we talked about some, you asked that question a minute ago. Say it again?
It stretches it too much.
It stretches it too much, your carotid arteries get stretched too much. But what is one of the main ways that we deal with long-term effects of blood pressure being elevated? Kidneys, right? So after you drink a Monster, you gotta pee. That's why, your blood pressure is elevated, and so by peeing, what are you doing to this formula? You're balancing it, you're bringing the stroke volume down, which would help bring your blood pressure down. Because you're losing blood volume by urinating, it brings your stroke volume down, which would bring your blood pressure back to a normal rate. Good?
I'm trying to go back to it, you know, and you know, you talked about those chronotropic agents to increase your heart rate, right? And remember I told you that even though you have an increasing heart rate, of course you're gonna see increasing show volume, blood pressure, but as he was saying, that if you have an increase in that chronotropic agent, whatever it is, that's going to have a consistent basis of increasing your heart rate, you're gonna expect to see eventually a decrease in that show volume, because the contractility is, it's non-stopping, right? And we talked about that, because if your contractility is increasing constantly, now you're affecting your preload, which is affecting your stroke volume, right? So you will start to see a shift in those numbers, versus everything just kinda following each other. Now you're gonna see one, it's gonna be continuous increase, and then now you're gonna see everything else kinda starting to drop down. Until the kidneys and the blood volume, or kidneys kinda try to excrete, or try to maintain or retain water when needed. You know what I mean?
Because your body wants to be in homeostasis, right? Do you die from a shark bite?
No. Oh, yeah, blood loss, maybe.
Say it, say it again?
Blood loss.
So do you die from the blood loss? You die from a loss of homeostasis. So when you lose blood, how does that affect your blood volume?
Goes down.
It goes down, right? So let's say that you're the nurse and you're working on this patient that has been shark bitten, right? Uh, they've lost a lot of blood, their blood volume goes down. What would be the first thing that you might wanna do after you get the blood, uh, clot?
Get fluid.
Get what? Not, not blood, but.
Fluid.
Fluid in terms of what?
I would say water.
Not, we wanna give pure water. Saline, right? So because it's isotonic to your blood solution. And so by doing that, that does what to the stroke volume? Makes it go up, right? And so then we maintain that homeostasis, and then we might give them a packed, um, whole, say it, John. Packed whole red, red blood? You give them red blood to bring their oxygen saturation back up, after you bring their stroke volume back up. Does that make sense? So, loss of homeostasis.
Uh, I also wanna add to that, you will give them red blood cells and fluids.
Same time.
Because like you said, like, blood has, plasma, if you think of it like, I'm in nursing school right now, I'm in last semester, but, um, to think of plasma like water. You have to have water to make the blood flow through the body. If you don't have enough water, you just have blood, and blood is like to make it thick and hard to.
And to jump off of his question, if you have no water to the blood, what are you increasing? What is one of the factors that was under the resistance? I talked about, it starts with a V. Viscosity, right? So if you have no water coming with that plasma, as he said, and this, this proteins and all this sluggishness, if you're increasing that viscosity, now you're increasing the resistance, and now you're still getting nowhere, right?
Is that the same thing as coagulation?
It, it can lead into coagulation, once we get into like chapter nineteen, we'll talk about that, but, because the body's trying to maintain this homeostasis, so it's gonna try to do everything it can to try to, so you still, depending on the cases, you know, depending on the cases, it's just important to make sure that you have your fluids in, uh, the blood at the same, given at the same time.
Then you're backing off what he said. How many of you went out and got dropped last night?
Everybody.
I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Madison, I appreciate your honesty. Alright, so let's just say that, that she did, right? She went out, she got dropped, her face is blood red right now.
I'm joking.
No, no, alright, just, you're fine. What would her body be like right now? What, what is alcohol?
Dehydrated.
Say it again?
Dehydrated.
It dehydrates you, right? And so how would that affect your blood viscosity?
Be thicker.
Be thicker, right? And so, and if your blood viscosity is thicker, meaning your blood volume is lower, how would you have to account for that with this formula? I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to this formula a lot, sir. Yeah, and, and also, um, so like what John was saying with the chronotropic agents and entotropic agents, it's gonna contract harder, right? So, uh, you're gonna have a stronger contractility to try to get that blood moving around. Good? I always use my son as an example, we have to go every year to get a, uh, he's type one diabetic, so his blood glucose levels do what? They skyrocket a lot, you know, if he doesn't take the proper insulin, uh, for the meal that he eats, his blood glucose levels goes sky high. How would that affect his viscosity of his blood?
Would it get thicker?
It gets thicker, it's kinda like sugar, right? The more sugar you put in it, right, the thicker it gets. And so, the reason he goes to the eye doctor once a year and they do a retinal scan on him, is to look for what?
Glaucoma, no.
Eye glaucoma. You do get pressure in the eyes, yes, increased, uh, fluid concentration, but what can happen to the?
A blurred vision?
Close. What happens with, so if the blood can't flow through capillaries? Close. It's called diabetic retinopathy. They, they don't necessarily pop, but you get limited amount of blood flowing through those capillaries, so what happens to the tissue around those capillaries if they're not getting blood flow? They can die, right? And so he can lose some of those photoreceptors in the eye, if he's not careful maintaining his blood glucose levels. Because his viscosity gets messed up, with the blood pressure being elevated. Do you wanna let them?
Yeah, I'll let them do it.
Alright, so we, we're gonna tell y'all to the wolves, okay? Me and him are gonna sit to the side, I'm gonna try to shut up. I, I'm sorry, guys, I, I love, this is fun stuff for me, so I will all, all day long. Um, so me and John are just gonna kinda sit and be fit and listen. Okay, we're gonna step out, never mind, we're gonna step out. Uh, do y'all need us to? Y'all can draw on the board, y'all know how this works? Okay, so.
I can, I just go there, I'll take it, and I just put a blank slate up.
Y'all know how to use, y'all know how to use iPads and stuff, right?
She old school, she really, she from the nineteen, she from nineteen seventies, you know?
So he's gonna pull up my face, or can you go back out?
So I'm, so, um, with everything, I'm trying to make sure that Cenotopia campus and the solo is the same, so, I wanna say it's gonna be the first week of March. So the week before spring break, so to give you an extra week to kinda study for everything.
Because cardio baskets.
Yeah, so we both will be covering seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, all of cardio baskets. The first week of March. We don't do midterm, only, only a final. Y'all ask questions, because they will report back to us, so.
I'll just have one, on blood pressure. Um, I'm gonna do just a little bit of time teaching app. Um, so, you said blood pressure, higher.
I just want you to work through it.
Okay, um, okay, so, to be honest, y'all, please let me know if I'm confusing y'all, because that is, 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 is taking it to a whole nother level, it's AMP. So it's, it's taking it to another level, as far as like nursing, it's, they'll make it easier for you. Because you know, you gotta find, you gotta teach your patients why the blood pressure is high. Sometimes, you know, someone who did not take college, so you have to like, teach them in a way of, oh, that's why my blood pressure is high, so then you can figure out ways to help them out. So, they're like, show why, heart rate, and PR, resist. So, in nursing school, they'll teach you. Oh, you're good. So in nursing school, they'll teach you preload, uh, afterload, and contractility. Okay, I'm spelling it wrong, but it's okay. So, uh, your preload, uh, do they, do they teach y'all these, these words?
I think they're like preload, afterload, and what's the third one?
Uh, contractility. Okay, uh, I'm gonna help y'all out, so, contractility, just think of it as the heart is contracting, is pumping the blood out. So, your, uh, PR, was, uh, resistance. So I think of that, they kinda teach it as your afterload, it's basically the amount of force that your body has to push the blood out, so you gotta think about it. Your heart is pumping blood out to your body, you have a lot of vessels in your body. So your body has to do what to get that blood out? The pressure has to go what? Because if it's low, I'm only getting like, if I, if I, uh, like, if my pressure's low, on my resistance, like, I might only get blood to my brain, I might only get blood to my arm. So the pressure has to be high, so I can get more to my brain, my arms, everywhere else. As far as your stroke volume. Oh, wait, hold on, let me not confuse y'all. Is I'm confusing anybody? Please let me know, okay, okay. So, your stroke volume, I use that as blood coming back to the heart. So, that means all of your blood pressure, I mean, all your blood vessels, like, your blood is coming back to the heart, so my pressure doesn't really have to be high, because we're just pulling blood to the body. But guess what happens? Your heart rate affects that. So, like going back to while we was talking about dehydration, you don't have a lot of water, so your blood is what? Thick. So, your heart is gonna say, your heart's like, hey, I'm not getting a lot of this blood, like, it's, it's coming slow. So your heart rate's gonna kick in and say, okay, so it's gonna say, hey, I need y'all to send me some more blood, because it's, it's coming, but it's coming, coming slow, because it's so thick. Remember water, water, we think of, water is like a natural diuretic, so it's like a non-diuretic, but a blood thinner. So it's kinda thinning the blood out, so you have more plasma than blood, so you can flush that fluid along with the blood into the body. So your body's like, okay, well, let me start pumping more, more blood to that heart, so we can get the blood out. So, if you're dehydrated, and you ain't got a lot of fluids, your heart rate's gonna kick in and say, let me, let me send you some more blood, let me, let me start increasing that amount of force going to your body. So, hmm, I don't wanna confuse y'all. Yeah, please let me know if I'm confusing y'all. Um, so, oh, going back to blood pressure, that's what I'm talking about, sorry. So, basically, your blood pressure's really the amount of force that your body is pushing out that blood. So you have arteries, arteries is the containing your, what type of blood? Oxygenated, oxygenated, so, uh, let me see, y'all don't talk about drawing, drawing is a little terrible.
But why you doing it? Do y'all know what the cardiac output only? Like, um.
It's the stroke volume times, uh.
Y'all need to know that, like, you need to know that, because you gonna have on there, like, what two things you need for your cardiac output, but you also need to know how to get your stroke volume. And y'all know that's the, and I found the volume minus, y'all know what's coming up?
How big?
Uh, we may not have gotten to that yet.
Y'all ain't got any of that yet? Keep talking about the earlier ones in here. But y'all ain't talked about how.
We talked about that one, but not the end diastolic one.
Do y'all know how to get your stroke volume? This one? Minus your, and. Y'all ain't talked about that?
I mean, we like, we talked about it, but we didn't get like a.
In detail?
He didn't like, say EDV minus ESP.
But we will fill it, so it's on the test we need to know. We're gonna talk about it, so it's now you're letting us know. It don't matter if we ain't gone over.
So he really just talked to y'all about like how to do this?
Like, he just said that the stroke volume was.
Yeah, that's what that is, but you know that you need, you need to know this in order to get your.
Wait, so that EDV and the ESP, that's stroke volume? Like, SV equals?
Minus EDV, yeah. And then. You really need to know these three, what you're talking about, AMP, um, inside diuretic. ADH and aldosterone. If y'all know that AMP decreases, like, your, um, stroke volume, then you gonna know that the other two, it's gonna increase. So that's like an easy way that I remember, I just remember that AMP is gonna decrease it by decreasing your sodium. You know, if you increase your sodium, water gonna follow, so that's gonna increase, like, your stroke volume. Like what he was saying earlier, when he was asking like, what was the three things? If you just remember that AMP, it decreases, like, your sodium, so it's gonna decrease your, um, stroke volume.
And then ADH and aldosterone.
Yeah, it don't increase it, so, that's like an easy way to remember it, so, if he asks on the test, like, what would decrease your stroke volume, he got this on here, you know it'll be that one, because it's the only one.
And then ADH and aldosterone increases, um, stroke volume?
Yeah, but you need to know how, like, how does aldosterone increase it?
Okay.
I'm asking. Somebody said, yeah, that's right, and so what does this one do, AMP? Decreases sodium, it's like the opposite, and so y'all know that the, um, inside diuretic, that holds water. So when you holding fluid, your volume is increasing. So, y'all, y'all need to know that.
That's a really good way, that's a really good way. So, blood pressure, um, hypertension. So, your, uh, resistance, your PR, just think about it, is you have a vessel here, and you gotta pump that blood out to your body, so, like you said, uh, trying to make sure I put it in simple terms for y'all, um, well, like you said, you know, when you work out, your, uh, your vessels what? Dilate. So, this, this puts, um, so that lessens the pressure, saying, okay, let's dilate the vessel, so we can get more blood out, and we don't have to work as hard. So, but, if you're like, let's say you didn't drink enough water for like, a whole day, and then you gonna work out, your arteries might be a little bit dehydrated, so they might be, they might what? Shrink. So, so the blood's like, oh, it's shrinking, so what it has, what do your heart rate needs to, well, what do your heart needs to do to try to get all that blood out through there? So, that increases your blood pressure, so, an easy way to kinda help y'all, so that's how it increases blood pressure. Because if, this is the main thing right here, is that, uh, what was that thing called, y'all?
Something like the A.
Yes, the blood, from the ventr- uh, the right, the left ventricle pumps the blood out. What's that, what's that valve called? It's aorta, but.
Aortic valve.
I think, yeah, semilunavial, yeah. So semilunavial to your aorta, and go out to your body, so, that's really, like, when you get into nursing school, that really tells you a lot. Like, you have people who has, y'all heard about cholesterol, and you talked about diabetes, so that basically like, you have, it does damage to your vessels. So you either make it hard, or like, that cholesterol, it causes plaque to build up in your arteries. So that makes, it makes it hard for your blood to come out of that artery. So your heart's like, okay, I need to contract harder and stronger to get that blood out. So that's why it causes your blood pressure to go high. Because I'm losing everybody. Any questions?
I'm gonna put it up here though, so I can listen.
I'm gonna ask y'all some questions. So you know you got your, um, P, Q, R, and, which, how would you, um, measure your heart rate?
R to R.
Yeah, that's right.
What was it?
R to R, like.
R to R interval?
But you know you got your P. I ain't y'all in right, because I didn't even know. Okay, so these to these, R to R. That measures your heart rate. So he'll probably ask you, and be like, what interval gives you the heart rate? So you'll know this from one R to the next one. And y'all know like, what's your normal heart rate?
120 over 80.
Yeah. Y'all, y'all, y'all can skip the rule.
You're listening.
So if you're over, like, say like 130, what's that called?
What's it called?
Tachycardia.
Anywhere lower.
Brady cardia.
Okay, what hormone decrease blood pressure? I just went over. ADP, yeah. Y'all know what the cor- cor- coronary circulation is?
Coronary, it goes to the, it goes to the heart directly, the heart muscle.
You know, your heart gotta get blood supply to in order for it to form.
We repeat the question.
The coronary.
Coronary circulation. It's, it supplies the heart and muscle.
Circulation, like, you know, when, um, blood goes through the, the ventricle, and it goes to the, into the body, you know it gotta go to the heart too, so even the heart can get like blood supply too, it's called cor- coronary circulation.
So whenever blood goes to the heart, that's what that's called?
Yeah.
Whenever it flows through the heart, that's what it's called?
Whenever it flows through the heart, that's what that's called?
Uh, like she was talking about, do make sure y'all know, um, I'm gonna try my best to.
You really need to know your hormones.
Is it mainly just?
You really need to know your hormones, and you need to know like, when your blood, there's some constrict, that like increase your blood pressure. And like, if you dilate, it's increasing, if you get that, then you.
Yeah, I'm just telling.
If it constrict, cause you know, the blood gotta pump harder, so your blood pressure's gonna increase. If it's open, like dilated, blood flow easier, so your blood pressure won't be as high. So it's kinda like with that, like with aldosterone, if you have more sodium in your body, it's gonna have to like push harder, cause you got like more blocks.
Are you allowed to tell us what hormones we should back this on?
Yeah, it's on the way we went over in me, cause like the last stuff, y'all almost had like, what's it called? Like the different.
It's called the anti-cran.
Yeah, see, you just need to know like what's dealing with the heart, like. And apparently it's gonna help y'all, like.
I like that, we're just like definitely have that, ask, ask somebody a question with you. She covered her face immediately, uh, let's see. Okay, what are some things, what are some things that might affect preload? Yeah, you're right there in mine. P preload, yes ma'am.
First go and tell us what's preload.
Blood come back to the heart, that can affect preload, that's what preload is. Blood that comes to the heart can affect preload, so your, if your blood is restricted, that would affect preload. Is that good?
What uh, on that Wiggers diagram? A Wiggers diagram, preload would affect what value and blood volume? During preload, what value would be affected on the Wiggers diagram?
Am I thinking of the wrong diagram?
No, that's electric, electrical. She's already said preload affects your uh blood volume, how much blood volume's coming back? So, she said that preload uh has to do with blood returning to the heart, so what value would that affect? You're thinking electric, electric. Yep, the volume of blood, down at the very bottom. What value does it affect, she is right with stroke volume, but in order for stroke volume be affected, what value has to be changed? Say it again? EDV, right, your end diastolic volume, the amount of blood returning while the heart's at rest. Would cause your EDV to go up or down depending upon, she said constriction, so that would cause it to go down, alright, cause you're not getting as much blood from the back.
See, our research group is hoping us so much.
What's your name?
Seven minutes ago, would not have been able to.
Ellie, what, what, what is it, you look confused, did I, did I say something wrong?
Like, what's the question, what's the answer?
Apparently I could use y'all, I might, I might go just let them talk, uh. What, what factor affects preload? It's, it's the amount of blood coming back to the heart, EDV is what is affected by the amount of blood come back to the heart.
So what affects the preload is the amount of blood coming back to the heart?
And then that would change your EDV.
So preload affects EDV?
Yes.
Would you have multiple factors that can affect the EDV? Volume resistance. So with them being in here, just trust me, this test is coming up.
If you do here, y'all can click this, um, and it pulls up a notepad, um, she's got the iPad.
So either way y'all go.
Ask them about the hormones, hold on.
So, I come in, I'm your patient. You checked my blood pressure, my blood pressure is extremely low, right? What are, what are ways is my body, what is my, what mechanisms are you expecting my body to go through in order to increase my blood pressure? What hormones would you see coming into play?
Increase the sodium.
Oh, you s- you said ADH, but you said it increased the sodium, were you trying to, which, which hormone is related to all that? Let's start over again, aldosterone, doing what now?
Increasing sodium.
Increasing the sodium and which what, what follows? And if you have water, increasing your water volume, what's in, what's increasing? Stroke volume based off of the blood volume, right, uh, what else is happening? ADH is retaining water, so you have two hormones that's coming together. In that synergistic effect, right, we talked about from chapter sixteen, synergistic having the same pronounced effect. So ADH is being released, targeting and allowing what to be retained now? Retaining water, right, a lot of people are getting aldosterone and ADH confused. Aldosterone is literally for water retention, meaning sodium retention, uh, uh, ADH is strictly for the water retention. Will allow the sodium to come, so more water is literally following the sodium.
We get to the kidneys, we go into a little bit more detail about how, but aldosterone targets your distal con- uh, convoluted tubule, whereas. ADH targets the collecting ducts, and so it just makes a, we'll, we'll get to that when we get to the kidneys, but it helps you retain water. Aldosterone by retaining salt, ADH by retaining water.
So I know they work together, but will ADH like come into play without aldosterone?
Yes, it can, because there was a clinical that correlated with the deficiencies of ADH, right, that diabetes insipidus, correct? So aldosterone can have a different level depending on the case, case, right? So if you have a decrease in your ADH, you're not gonna find dehydration because you have more excretion. And not retaining of that blood volume, which if blood volume is decreasing, you're gonna see a change in um, your actual heart rate and also your blood pressure.
What was the other name for ADH? Basal presence, so what would be the other effect that it has, not only just volume, but what? Say it again? So what does that mean it's doing? Constricting the blood vessels, which would cause your peripheral resistance to go up as well.
Last question before I leave, so uh, if I am, my blood pressure is extremely over the level of one twenty over eighty, what state am I in? Hypertension, what medication did I tell you, what class of medication did I tell my students that were responsible for decreasing your blood pressure?
We hasn't got to that yet, so don't, don't mind, don't go stressing.
What class of drugs were important for decreasing your blood pressure, for my students, statins, okay? Statins, please make sure you look at that, cause I will give you clinical question that's correlated with it. If you have more questions about it, they will actually assist you, I'm just gonna let y'all go, cause it seem like y'all don't wanna sit here. Yep, there was only medication classes that we were talking about.
I, I'm not, I haven't got to that yet, we were talking about beta blockers and.
Yeah, now I did talk, which, and we talking about beta blockers, I did talk about the receptors, they talked about the receptors, so they know about the receptors. So if you, y'all hit the surface level, we can do it. Yeah, I, I'm kinda, I just wanna kick y'all in it, because y'all sitting here writing and watching, y'all, I'm like. Now, y'all can't say, I come to y'all every day, just like I. I'm always gonna come up top rope on y'all, but it's okay, I love y'all anyways, but I wasn't gonna bring y'all Chick-fil-A next week in my class. Yeah, so, I will, I will say, I asked, I asked them, you know, we do like the Zoom on Sundays for last test. I did ask them to like start being over the Zoom now, uh, before y'all leave, y'all wanna create a group meeting. For his students, obviously, so all, everybody can get in, so when y'all do the Zoom meetings, y'all can just put the links in, and therefore y'all can help them out. But they'll be here every Friday and Sunday on Zoom, if y'all wanna do it, or whatever day they're available for y'all.
On the true or false quiz, can we like do true or false?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to him to incorporate this double truth false in his class. Y'all have been making hundreds lately.
Uh-uh, you need to be talking to him.
I'm gonna let him give y'all one quiz of the double truth false, and I just wanna see if he's still.
I gave y'all that hormone quiz, and I ain't even graded, because y'all left half of it blank, and I was like.
It may have been wrong test.
I, I, a lot of them were wrong, and I was just like, I, I can't grade this, y'all made me sad.
They make me so mad, I'm.
Alright, that's good.
Statins?
Or how to lower your blood pressure?
I don't know if he'll give you a medication name, because that's.
He did, he did, but he ain't went over it yet. He must've went over it, like, did he say anything about the cholesterol or?
If he does put anything like statin on there, just from, this is, this'll help you out in nursing school. That's, that's the answer, there's some other blood pressure medicines, like they talked, um, I forgot what the other teacher's name was. He said, y'all talked about beta blockers.
That we're going to, but I do have a question about uh, ven- what is venustone? The, the whole thing is, explain how preload, venustone, and gravity affect cardiac output, I just don't know what venustone is.
What type of it is?
Uh, chapter eighteen, it's so learning outcomes.
Answer, that's to be for decreasing blood pressure, always.
But he probably gonna put it in a way where like, you're in, like, he gonna make it like you're in a.
So what are some of the harder questions that we need to be aware of?
Do y'all know, um, like, what's happening during like depolarization, like? What's coming in, like calcium or sodium or potassium? Yeah, it's like a diary longer, like, it show like, either calcium coming in or potassium.
Chapter eighteen or seventeen, it might be, it's either seventeen or eighteen.
But like y'all know, um, during depolarization, that's from sodium, I mean, it don't look like, maybe it is. Yeah, this.
Okay, so what's happening there?
Okay, yeah, like y'all need to know this, cause he gonna have under like, either, like the instructions will be like, either rapid, initial. Playo or repolarization, like you need to know that during depolarization, that sodium is entering. And like, but you gotta know this rapid, and like initial is when. A small amount of the potassium is leaking out, but like sodium are like starting to stop.
Can you say that again?
He'll be on there like, okay, the question say something like, sodium is entering and reach phase. You have to choose which phase, like, for example, repolarization, that's when, um, the potassium is exiting. Like sodium isn't coming in, but like depolarization, sodium is coming in. So you need to know like what's coming in during which phase. You need to know this, you need to know what's happening during each phase.
Is it when all the valves are closed?
Like which, um, like where is it happening, on the wave?
It, is, it's a straight line, isn't it? ST segment?
And you know, this like, your rescue, cause like, if you didn't have a rescue, then your heart will just stay contracted.
And those who's going into nursing, that once you understand it, it makes a lot more sense when you get to nursing school, you go onto A, AG and everything.
Um, I think you went over this, like the S one, then when the AV close, then the S two, then when the semi lunar close. Y'all do know the difference between it, right?
Isn't that's one where it's constricting, and the S two is when it's opening up?
Um, I'm saying like, you know when, like the difference between the AV valve and the semi lunar valve?
Do we need to know that, or you want to?
Your hair is, your hair is pressing buttons.
But you just need to know when, like, and you need to know like, what is when, is that the AV or the? S one is when the AV is closing, not opening, cause he'll trick you and put like opening. S one is when the AV is closing, and two is when the um semi lunar is closing, not opening. Cause he'll have like open close, he'll have like AV open, AV close. Semi-lunar open and semi-lunar close, you know that it's closing, so S one is when when? This, so y'all didn't go over that?
Yeah.
Yeah, y'all need to know this, this is how you get your, um, stroke volume. So like I was saying, like, the harder it actually gets your, um, stroke volume times your heart rate, but in order to find your stroke volume, you need to know its form. And the average is usually steady, cause they can tell y'all, y'all don't have to do like a math.
Horn or Sessi?
You took Sessi?
Yeah, that's gotta do with it, but you gotta know how to calculate your stroke volume.
It's E V V. Do we need to know the numbers?
Y'all know your pathways of.
Yeah.
Got me on the test.
Yeah, but I'm not so sure about, um, the nodes, that, like, the sequence of nodes.
Like S A.
Like the S A node, and then it goes to the.
And then your A V bundle, and then your left and right brachial fibrous. Y'all know that pathway?
Yeah, can we go over that?
I thought you talked about that part, you just drew.
Oh, that's, that's a good one on the pathway and how it affects your blood pressure. If he gives y'all like medical questions, I can help y'all on that, but this, she'll help y'all more on like the.
Mr. Horn likes to do.
If you go through the PowerPoint, you just read everything, like, it's basically.
Like this, like this or the stars, cause he put the stars on.
Stars too, but like, with this, yes, you need to know that, like, you need to know that, it's basically what I wrote on there, that stroke volume is the heart rate. Yeah, so that, okay, I need to know that, everything that's in red, learn it.
What questions do y'all have on the, um, electrical conductivity of the heart?
Yeah, like, it's literally everything is.
Is there particular things that y'all?
So what causes the initial S A node to fire?
Yes, this right here, your S A node, that's basically, it starts the whole contraction part. So like, it's, it's what tells your left and right when to contract and when to relax. It's the same thing with your, when it goes into your A V, your A V bundles, and then it branches off into your right and left, and at the very end, you have your brachial fibrous. That basically, that's your heart contractility. Now, when you learn about, like she said, you know, the sodium goes in, and the potassium goes out, that basically, it goes in deep on what, you know, what your S A nodes does. So, um.
So the S A node, is that your?
What is your main, um?
Main start of the heartbeat?
Yeah, like, what is your main? But anyway, it'll be your S A node, you know, your S A node is like the most important.
Yeah, is that your, um, pacemaker?
He gonna ask, he gonna tap on there, what is the heart's main pacemaker, it's gonna be S A, A V, the, um, for brachial fibrous, you're gonna pick S A. But you know, like, if there's something wrong with your S A node, you do know that your A V node is gonna pick up next, cause it's. But your S A node is like your main, and then it's like, he had on, I remember he had on there, it's like the S A node, heart rate is like.
Sixty to a hundred.
You need to know that, yeah, sixty to a hundred, you need to know that.
Y'all know what the normal heart rate is, what is it?
Seventy five, sixty to eighty?
Cause I don't wanna confuse y'all.
So you said that sixty to a hundred is normal, what?
Heart rate, sixty to a hundred is a normal heart rate.
Okay.
And your S A node, that's what, that's what controls your heart rate. That's what causes that beat, so it's like, hey, I'm gonna send out a signal for your heart to beat seventy beats a minute. So that's the contracture of the heart contracting seventy beats per minute. So, let's say, your S A node is like, oh, I'm not working right, uh-uh, I'm fixing the blood, or I'm fixing the acapul. Your A V node is finna kick in, I say, okay, I'm fixing to beat, I'm gonna try to beat between sixty to eighty beats per minute, just to kinda, until you fix yourself, until you do something. So, and then if your A V node, if that gets wonky, then it'll go back down into your A V node, your A V bundle, it's like, okay, I'm gonna try to beat forty to sixty, cause, what's, what y'all doing? Then, if that one says, I'm getting tired, I can't work, then it goes back to your left and right branches, those will be less than forty, so. But your heart can't really function that much, cause you gotta stay between your sixty to a hundred beats per minute. Just know that your S A node, that is what mainly focused on, we need that normal sixty to a hundred beats per minute.
Okay, and then so, so your S A node is doing that, what would the A V node be doing, if, if it's not needing to?
If that, uh, if your S A node gets a little wonky, that's when your A V node will kick in, it's.
And what's it doing if it's not, if the S A node is fine, is it still beating, or it's still like beating with the S A node?
Mm-hmm, cause it sends the signal out. So it'll six, signal to these two, to, like, oh, what's the P, uh, what's the P interval starts, what's the?
Depolarization.
That's the contraction, that's the contraction, that will give you that little.
Like, what's he gonna ask?
He gonna ask what each one do, like, the P. If you know that the P wave has to do with the atrium, and the Q R S has to do with the ventricle, you can ask a lot of questions on here, cause like, he'll ask something like, what part of the E C G would be affected by slow depolarization of the ventricle? And so, the answer choice is, it'll be like the P, Q R S, T, if, if you know that the Q R S has to do with the ventricle, then that's the answer. Some of these questions, we don't have to know what's going on, you just know like, what.
What it does.
What it does.
So like, on the E K G, you know, this, y'all said, the P, uh, the P wave is what?
The atrial depolarization.
So, if that S A node gets a little wonky, and, uh, turn it, if I can draw, I can't even draw it quick. So you have your P wave, R S, I don't know, that's your T wave, so, you know that's your atrial's. So this basically the contraction, so, and then you know that your Q R, your Q R S is your what? And then, and if it helps you out, the D is mostly is contracture, and then your repolarization basically, now you will find it out on your T's, your T is what? This thing is re, is, is resetting, it's getting ready to do this all over again.
And the, uh, atrial repolarization, that's hidden with, in the Q R S complex?
Yes, yes, cause you won't technically see it, but it's, it does all of that to reset itself, to start back over and say, okay, I'm fixing to contract. She set up on the little electric motor, so if he'll tell you like, the S A node is the, you know, that is the pacemaker, so what lets you know that it's working, you have to see the what?
The P wave.
P wave, and that's the.
And when you gonna try like a normal heart rate, like, if your S A node is working good, you gonna have normal heart rate, so you know, it's gonna be like this. If you know, uh, if your S A node isn't, your A V gotta pick up, your heart rate's gonna be lower.
Cause they have y'all on like the electrical conductivity and how the E K G falls with that.
How did you study for this test, did you just get through the red on the PowerPoint?
I'm gonna fight against the human class, and then like, I don't wait, like, you gotta, like, you cannot be behind, everything literally like, especially like the hormone test, y'all, y'all had. Yeah, like, y'all need to know the hormones, like, everything gonna be a lot, so don't wait, like, after y'all get out of class, study with y'all, cause it's a lot of information. No, cause it's a lot of information, I think that was study like, after you get out of class, cause it's like, you're gonna find. You can't like just squeeze all of it.
Yeah.
That was my problem.
And a big thing that helps me in nursing school, those who go into nursing school, if you know what's going on, you can answer almost any question. Memory's good, memorization's good, but getting to nursing school, that's, memory won't work as well as anything, so. If you understand, when he teaches you, like, please do ask questions, but like, if you just understand, you know how I helped y'all out with the E K G, and how these correlates with it, you can almost answer any question he gives you, so if he says, um, what part of? He'll say like, what is depolarization, you know, that's, that's when the, when the, when the heart does what? So that's, that's it.
Or, I thought the depolarization was, it's sending the signal to contract.
Mm-hmm, correct, so that's the contract, so it's sending the depolarization, send, the S A node sends whatever part it needs to, to contract.
And you know this is which entering?
What?
Sodium, sodium.
Wait, what?
Sodium enters when it contracts?
Sodium, depolarization, that's when like, sodium.
Which causes that?
Contract, that's what causes it.
And so, repolarization is passing leaving?
Um, yeah, yeah. Repolarization is passing leaving, um, depolarization, sodium entering.
And just saying the repolarization, really think relax, that's when your heart, that's whatever part needs to relax. Just know, you're welcome, just know your parts of your heart, elec- electricity, uh, what else?
Thank you so much.
If you don't mind me asking, you're in nursing, what's your major? Nursing.
Where y'all in nursing school at?
Uh, yes, we'll send the link to you. We'll send the link to you, so all you do is click the link and it'll automatically pop in.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, he said that you're on the like curve or something?
Yeah, the curve, yeah.
So, is it the stomach, like, the, um, other questions, did, can we just?